Okay, we're going to call the December 17th Board of Trustees Regular Meeting to Order. At this moment, we'll have a moment of silence and then a Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda and approval of the consent agenda items.
I move to adopt the agenda but and would like to pull item 8B, which is Policy BDE Board Committees, and bring that board in through the January process.
BDE.
BDE, mhm.
A second.
That's number, item, sorry, 8.
8B, is that 8B?
Yep.
Which item?
It's item 8B.
B.
And then, then for the consent agenda items, I think there were just two things that we voted on. One was the PE ban policy and the other was the magnet schools. Were there any other, Jeff, that I missed that should be on the consent agenda?
Those are the two that I had.
Okay.
Okay, but you just want to pull item 8B, correct?
Just pull item 8B, mhm.
Okay.
And, for still a second.
But you moved, you're moving into January what we're doing, right?
Correct.
So maybe we might include in the motion that goes to the January meeting. That makes it a lot easier.
Yeah, go to the January committee, the whole meeting.
Which one does that take?
Item 8B.
Which is the board policy, board committee policy.
Okay. If everyone can go ahead and cast their vote.
Oh, go back here. Here, here, I got it. Don't vote for him.
Yeah, don't vote for me, Kate.
Okay, Julie, who are we waiting on?
Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller?
I can't get, I can't get the day needed.
Hold on.
I can't just need to come up.
Hold on. Okay.
I can't get, I couldn't find the record. Feature, oh, okay. I want to meet in this place.
Did you? He's not in. Okay.
All right, is everyone in? Has everyone cast their votes?
There we go.
Okay, votes pass. Item, approval of minutes from our regular board meeting on November 26.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second, somebody.
Second.
Okay, that motion passed 61. At this time now, there are some general cheer remarks that I'd like to make at this moment. A key recommendation from the Clemson Equity and Inclusion Study is to make school district governance more effective, accountable, and credible. And toward this end, I've asked the superintendent and the district council to identify a parliamentarian who would be willing to work with the board to ensure that we are running our meetings as effectively and efficiently as possible. I'm asking this board to support this initiative moving forward in securing a parliamentarian to start in January at a committed to hold meeting and regular board meeting. And, and with, along with our general counsel in seeking someone to help us in that, in that area. I will keep you updated as, as we begin to progress in securing this for our meetings. The second thing I want to talk to you about today is our board training. Both the Clemson study and the advanced accreditation report clearly indicated that we need to improve our effectiveness as, as a board and superintendent leadership team. And one of the advanced ed requirements states, "The board will commit to and engage in whole board training in leading and supporting effective educational systems." I want to remind you that CCSD is a member of the Council of Great City Schools. And we have talked with an individual who assists with the board and the superintendent leadership training provided by the council. This training helps boards that want to intensely focus on improving student achievement. The council, the consultant with whom we, we have engaged or have spoken with would like to contact each board member in January to conduct a telephone interview. They will be no charge to the district for this service. If you're willing to participate, then Julie will be contacting each of you to schedule a time for a conversation. He then will provide some recommendations back to the district. And again, I hope that, that this board will support this initiative moving forward with this proposed board training. The third thing I want to talk about today is that Mr. Miller is, is, is one of our board liaison, or was our board liaison, or currently is our board liaison as we speak at the very moment for Head Start. We need to appoint a new board member to fulfill that position and I'm asking Reverend Collins if he will be willing to serve in this capacity. Thank you. The fourth thing I want to talk to you about today is the Ratio Equity Institute, REI is what it stands for. Board members, you have been invited to an invitation-only Ratio Equity Institute training in January. And it will take place on January 7th from 9:00 AM. From 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. If you are interested, I ask that you please contact Julie or the superintendent as soon as possible. We will provide details of board members who can attend this one-day session. This is very important, very critical, I think, for our board moving forward, particularly with the Clemson diversity study and also the advanced ed recommendations that we have, have recently been referred to us. This will be a great training for the board members and I hope that you will consider attending on January 7th from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Also, we will be passing out to you today, and I, and this is something new that, that I'm proposing to or recommending to each and every one of us, and it's already been established and it's been set and hoping that this is something that we can do quarterly. Jeff, if you can, please, Mr. Burrow. We have known from previous time that our superintendent has had what's called, or is currently having what's called coffee with the superintendent. Well, we're proposing, I'm proposing on January 18th, that, which is a, an established teacher work day, that we have coffee with board members on January 18th. The Panera Bread, West of the Ashley, from 7:30 to 9:00 AM on Sam Rittenberg. This is an opportunity for teachers, or community, or parents, or students, or whomever desire can come and have an opportunity to have a conversation with board members. So, we're proposing this date, it has already been set and established on January 18th from 7:30 to 9:00 AM. We, we did this maybe a few months ago at the Panera Bread, West of the Ashley, where we had the opportunity. And there were a number of people that came out, which was a great conversation and a great dialogue that took place. And it's an opportunity for us to also allow teachers on that day as well to come and to participate in conversation with us. So, I ask that you please make note of that date, from 7:30 to 9:00 AM. Also, Ms. Jeffrey just attended the South Carolina School Board Association here in Charleston. Ms. Jeffrey, if you could please just give us a brief synopsis of, of that event or what took place.
So, members of the, of the School Board Association, so school board members from all over the state were there. And there were four members of our state legislature also there to talk with us and answer questions. And I believe there were 40 recommendations that the School Board Association came up with that we passed to send up to the state of things that I think we all would agree our schools need and things that we need these state legislators to be aware of, some of which are required of us but not funded, or things that aren't required of us but we all think are, are good things to have in our schools. So, and this is my first time attending, and I was really impressed with the four members of the state legislature that came and how supportive they were and how open they were for us, anyone who wants to go up to Columbia and meet with them to talk about these issues when they have hearings. So, that, and Cindy's been many more times than I have, but, and I was impressed with that, how that all worked and that we have open communication with the state. I'm not sure it always happens, but it happened that day. And there were, I don't know, 200 members, school board members there or something, a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffries.
Sorry, one more thing. And a lot of the issues we see here in Charleston County are obviously statewide issues, but, so it was good to talk to other members of other districts about what they're doing.
To that note, I'd like to read a letter to you today. It says, "Dear Reverend Mack, please accept this letter as my formal resignation as a member of the School Board of Trustees for Charleston County School District effective January 1, 2019. I will continue to serve in my full capacity until such time, and if I can be of assistance during this transition, please let me know with warmest and kindest regards, Michael Miller." To that end, at this time, Mr. Miller, we'd like to make a presentation to you, to say to you. Do you want me to come down here? All right.
Unrecognized, you're going to go stand up.
I'm matched. Unreliant. Unparalleled. Dynamic. Intelligent.
Can't replace you.
So, Mr. Miller, on behalf of superintendent, who's not part of what does, staff, teachers, parents, students that you have rendered service to for the past six years, I believe, we say to you, thank you for your service, thank you for your time that you put in and all of your hard work that you've rendered to the district. We know that you are moving on to another venture into your life. Congratulations on your election as the new RMC for Charleston County. But we say to you that we appreciate your hard work and we'd like to give you this small token to say thank you, congratulations, and we wish you success. Thank you.
Okay, I want, if, if at all possible, I'd like to say a couple of words.
Okay.
It's been a really long time since I stood on this side of that. I came here, before, before running for the school board, I came to the school district one time to beg the board not to hire a potential, a potential principal for a school, not because I didn't like him as a person, I thought he was a wonderful person, I just thought at the time, based on, I was a part of the, the interview committee that interviewed this particular principal. And of all of the folks that were being recommended for that particular job, I personally felt that he wasn't the best fit for the school. I'd been volunteering at that school for about seven years prior to meeting that particular gentleman, so I had some intimate knowledge of the school. So, the first time I came, I came in this capacity, so I think it would be fitting that I leave standing where I started. I, I always have a lot to say, but I'm very considerate and very purposeful in the things that I do say. And I'll be the first one to admit that when I decided to run for the school board, it was never for me as a person, or for my two children. At the time, I only had a daughter at that time, and so now I have a son who's in, in our schools as well, so it was never for my two children. I, I really felt the urge to, to be a voice for so many who seem to be very voiceless in the process of achieving a good education here in Charleston County. And there's a Kwanzaa saying that you need to lead your community better in which you inherited it. And, and so, when I do, thought about my ability to potentially move on and go on to another transition, I, I really had some heartburn about leaving the board or even just deciding to run for another office. I don't necessarily like the people that I serve with all the time, but I love the work that we're supposed to do. I think that work is supposed to be beyond whether or not I like you guys or respect you guys, right? It should always be about our children, about whether or not we are able and capable of providing a quality education to every child regardless of where they live or their family condition. And I'm sad because I don't think that, that we've done that my six years on the board. I think there are some cases where we do really good things with a lot of our children, but there's so many of our children who are still not being properly served in this educational system. And so, I'm sad today. I, I called Erica this morning and I told Erica that I was sad today because it was going to be my last board meeting. She was like, "Well, that's not, we're, we're always going to see you." And, and that is true. I've already been asked to continue my service on the Head Start Board because before I became a board member and served as a liaison for the board, I was already on that, on that board. I already served on school improvement councils and PTAs across the district before I became a board member. But this particular work is very, very special to me. I asked my wife not to bring the kids today because I told I'd probably cry if I saw my babies in the audience. But I do love what the voters of Charleston County have asked me to do in this capacity of being a board member. It is work that not only is necessary, but it has a purpose beyond the nine of us that serve in a board capacity. It is larger than the superintendent and her staff. It is even much larger than the city as a whole. Because if we are not doing our very best every single day to make sure that all of our children have access and opportunities that they would normally never have, then we're just not fulfilling our purpose and our promise. And so, my last words to my colleagues is that courage is something not everybody has, but I think you can gain courage. I think we gain courage by seeing those who exhibit courage, and we want to follow in their footsteps. There's always been a mantra for the school district, right? Before, now it's children are students at the work of our, the heart of our work, and before that it was something, and before that was something, and those are kind of really cliche-ish kind of phrases, but at their core, it should pull at all of our heartstrings, right? All of us who are in positions of leadership in this district have to be working toward that end and that goal. It's not always, I think the work is easy personally. I think it's easy if your position is you want to do what's in the best interest of every child. I think it becomes more difficult when we let our biases, whether they be overt or implicit, fuel how we vote and how we view people and children. Charleston is a very unique, very strange, very special place. It has a lot of history that is not always as colorful and nice and angelic as it ought to be, which makes the work of being on a school board even more difficult. But there was a phrase that said you have to put the truth on the table. And I think if the board is to do the work that I think we are capable of doing, and, and I'm always, I can't say I'm a negative person, but I start everybody at zero, and I let you work your way up. I don't give you a hundred because you're a doctor, or a lawyer, or engineer and see if you can knock yourself down. I want to, you have to, respect is earned, not given and not granted. And I think as soon as the district as a whole, and not just the district, but as soon as the city as a whole respects everyone in it, I think we can move forward. So, I'm sad today because the day's my last board meeting, but I may be far, but not far enough. My office is right up the street. So, it's not close enough to walk, but I might take a rickshaw every now and then to come see you guys and see how you guys are doing. But I'm not going anywhere. I no longer have 50,000 children anymore. I still have my two biological, and even before that, I adopted high schools and elementary schools across the district. So, I just want to say thank you for serving with me and putting up with me and allowing me to say things probably only the way I can say them. I don't apologize for being very blunt and very open and direct. I only laugh unless it's funny and I only scratch unless it itches. That's just the way I was raised. And so, I thank you guys. I look forward to continuing to watch the board grow and fall and get up and fall and get up from a different seat. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Reverend Collins.
I want to thank Mr. Miller for his service to the school board and to the Charleston County residents also. Mr. Reverend Mack, you read, the first paragraph you read talks about a board parliamentarian. You also mentioned something about legal counsel, and I just want to make sure I understood what you were saying. If you could just clarify, then I could, before I ask a question or two. What, what were you saying exactly about the board parliamentarian for January?
So, I've asked the superintendent and district council to seek out a parliamentarian that can be a part of our committee to hold in regular board meeting, at least for the first six months of the year.
All right, so, good, that's, that's a good. So, are they going to get, get a selection of candidates for the position, or just, just going to bring us back somebody?
Right now, they're seeking out a, a number of individuals that, that can be identified as such and probably make a recommendation.
So, the board can have the final say so on it?
Well, not necessarily the board. I mean, I'm asking the superintendent and general counsel to, to, to seek someone out that's qualified in that area so that we can have someone to represent us.
Yeah, as long as, as long as we can all get, get to work with. Now, the second part you mentioned about-
I don't want to delay the process because it's something that's needed, yeah.
I just want to make sure someone we all can communicate with, unless you allow us to meet the person also. You mentioned about, hmm? You mentioned also about legal counsel. I want to make sure, I don't make sure I understand you said about legal counsel? Were you saying about for the board or what were you speaking about? You said legal counsel.
The superintendent and, well, Natalie Hamm, our legal counsel, to seek out a parliamentarian. Is that what you're referencing?
No, not the parliamentarian. Okay, I'm done with the parliamentarian. I thought, I thought I was going to say something about legal counsel also.
No.
So, you're just using legal counsel then to help get a parliamentarian?
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other further questions and remarks? Okay, at this time now, we move to the appointment of Audit and Finance Committee members per board policy, BDE, and I am recommending Mr. Todd Garrett and Ms. Kate Darby to represent Audit and Finance.
Okay, so you're making that the formal motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that. All right, for still a second at this point. Thank you.
See how important it is for a parliamentarian?
Yep.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is Todd Garrett currently, he's currently the chair of Cal, correct?
Correct.
And so he, so the recommendation that he be, is the recommendation that he be the chair or just a member of the Audit and Finance Committee?
Member of Audit and Finance.
And then that committee will then vote on chair, right?
Correct.
But that chair can only be a CCSD board member, correct?
I'm sorry, say that again?
That, the chair of that committee, because that chair consists of five members, only the chair, the chair must be a member of this board, correct?
According to policy, Mr. Miller, this stand to be corrected. A board member will be appointed by the committee's chair, by the chairman of the board, so I stand to be corrected. Then I will make that recommendation of who will serve as chair.
Okay, gotcha.
I'm sorry, so Todd chair, Kate member? Is that what you just said?
No.
No, he said he would, he said he would appoint a chair.
I'm sorry.
According to committee, yes. Policy.
Both, both are, both as members and then the chair-
Is selected from-
Appointed by the chairman of the board.
Right, so who is he appointing? I'm asking you, who are you appointing?
I don't think he's doing that yet until we vote on those two, right?
Correct.
He's not voting on the members now.
Should I vote? I'm not going to be-
Be appointed.
Yeah, you can vote, you're good.
Any other questions?
I'm here till-
Till 2019.
Well, that is true.
All right, has everyone cast their vote?
Yes.
All right, we'll have five yes, two no, and one abstention. Okay. All right, at this time now, Ms. Taylor.
Eric, who are you appointing chair, or is it some secret?
It's, it's not a secret, but if, right now, I'm going to appoint Mr. Garrett as Okay, Ms. Taylor, we'll now have our special recognition.
Good evening, Mr. Reverend Rowey, Chair Mack, Vice Chair Darby, board members, special, special guests. We have a special recognition this evening, and I'd like to invite the Wando High School Band and, and all of their representatives to please come forward. I'd like to welcome drum majors Alexis Clark, who's in 12th grade, A.J. Johnston, who's in 12th grade, Savannah Millenchamp, who's in 12th grade, and Anna Johnston, who's in 11th grade. The Wando Marching Band made history with its best finish ever in the Bands of America Grand National Championship last month, coming in sixth place at Lucas Oil Stadium in Indianapolis, Indiana. The Grand National Championships is recognized as the premier marching band event in the nation. The field competition featured 108 bands in preliminary competition on Thursday and Friday, with 37 bands advancing to the semifinals during the day on Saturday. Twelve of those bands advanced to the finals on Saturday evening, and the Wando Band placed six among, with, six among them with a score of 93.95, which is the Warriors' highest score ever in the Grand National Championships. Let's give them a round of applause for that. This is Wando's fifth appearance at the Nationals and Wando's fifth year making it to the finals. Only two other bands in South Carolina participated in the championships this year, and that was Fort Mill High School and Nation Ford High School. The title of the show this year was "By a Thread," which was based on the works of Alexander Calder, who's a senior, Davis, and Davis Gin, and it was, and he was proud because this was his final performance as a Wando Warrior. The Board of Trustees will also like to present you with a proclamation, and if you will indulge me, I'll read it really quickly. In recognition and appreciation of the Wando High School Marching Band's long and distinguished history as one of the best marching bands in the nation, whereas the Wando High School Marching Band recently finished- Marching Band recently finished sixth in the nation in the Bands of America National Marching Band Championship in Indianapolis, making the fifth time, making the fifth time the band has been a national finalist, the only band in state history to accomplish this honor. Whereas the Wando High School Marching Band is the only band in the state, in state history to win multiple Bands of America Regional Marching Championships. Whereas the Wando High School Marching Band has had the most students of any high school in South Carolina make the All-State Band for 13 consecutive years. Whereas the Wando High School Marching Band has had the most students in the All-State Jazz Band for the last 12 years. Whereas the Wando High School Marching Band has had the most students of any high school in the nation in the Honor Bands of America. That was in 2018. Whereas the Wando High School Marching Band is the only band in state history to have three concert bands accepted to the state concert festival. Whereas the Wando High School Marching Band won the state marching band championship the last 11 years in which they competed. Whereas the Wando High School Marching Band Color and Winter Guard has won numerous state and circuit championships. Whereas the Wando High School Marching Band's senior classes of 2017 and '18 won a combined $4.7 million in college scholarships. And whereas the Wando High School Marching Band has been successful through the combined efforts of the students, directors, faculty administration, parents, and band supporters, as well as the longstanding support from the middle school band programs at Cario Lang and Mutry Middle Schools. Now therefore be it known that the South, that the Charleston County School District and the Board of Trustees hereby applaud and congratulate the Wando High School Marching Band as a source of great community pride as one of the top marching bands in the nation. And this is signed by Board Chair Reverend Dr. Eric Mac, Board Vice Chair Mrs. Kate Darby, and Superintendent of Schools Dr. Jerita Postaway.
Okay.
And we'd like all board members to come down and take a photograph with...
Just take, just the chair, the vice chair, the rest of the...
The board with, with the band members who are here.
I want to take, I want to take your pictures. This is my last day of pictures.
Go, Michael, go.
They don't need to see us in that picture in 10 years, survive now.
You don't want to be...
You're tired.
I'm old. I'm young, y'all.
And you went to...
Thank you, sir.
I was looking.
I'm talking about...
Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. And one, two, three.
You want to have your back up?
I'm sitting here.
You're a bush meal.
You'll never be able to save it.
Okay, we will continue on our meeting. At this time now, we'll have the consideration of the executive session items.
I move on item 3A, I move that we uphold the action of the D2 constituent board on zoning for Mutry Middle School.
I second.
I'm moving second. Are there any questions?
It's about time to find your voice.
I don't have a voter thing.
Yeah, it hasn't come up yet.
She's working on it.
It's coming.
There it is.
Reverend Collins, you voted?
I believe it.
Okay. Cut, our motion passes, seven yes, one abstention. Item 3B, contractual matters?
I move that we approve the contracts as presented by staff for the charter school through, and they're through June 30, 2019.
I second.
Question.
It's probably over, and second, there's Mr. Holland.
That also includes that discussion with prestige, correct?
No.
No.
No, she said she'd bring that back to us.
I would like to ask the board to wait and do this in January, we're within the deadline, so we could get them done correctly and a little bit more accurately if possible.
Wait to, wait to do what?
Well, can I, I think since Natalie was here today, I think she heard that, a recommendation that perhaps we put those all into one document. I don't think that can be accomplished by our January meeting, so, and that state's requiring us to have these contracts done by the end of January, we could work on having those, one, one document in place by July for when we renew that, well, whenever we vote to renew for 2019.
I'm just asking, but those documents exist. It, it, it's not a question of being able to create them by January, they're created today. It's a question of incorporating them, but again, it's the board's will.
Okay.
Is that something that Ms. Hamm could do, or no?
She said she could.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
She's going to be, she's on the train immediately now.
Yeah, that's my question.
She's on the train immediately.
That was my concern.
So, is it going to have any impact, any effect to wait?
Yeah, there's a charter school that needs this approved tonight.
Yeah. She, I mean, she asked us to approve this tonight.
She'll make the changes that we talked about at a later date.
Man, what are you asking the board to do?
Vote on them when they're completely finished and accurate.
When they're all completely finished?
Right.
I got you.
But it was her recommendation to vote them tonight, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Got you.
Which one is needed tonight? I'm sorry.
She'll, she won't tell you in public, she'll tell you.
I don't, I don't know. I missed that part of the meeting.
Okay, so everyone cast their vote?
You weren't here.
Julie, who are we waiting on?
Reverend Collins.
Reverend Collins. Can you cast your vote, please, Reverend Collins?
Always waiting on Collins.
I think he enjoys having his name calling him. You know about that.
Paul, why don't you write about that?
He has a fetish for that.
Write about the delayed vote of Reverend Collins.
If he gets beat first one time, I'll jump and say hallelujah.
I am first one times.
Okay, Reverend Collins, have you voted? Thank you.
Must be a fool in mind.
Okay, that motion passed, seven yes, one no. Okay, at this time now, we'll have public comments.
Okay, um, public comments, we just have two folks to do public comments today, and you have two minutes each. The first is Melinda Hamilton.
And you can come speak right up here.
Yes, yes.
Good evening. I thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters, and I want to start by thanking you all for the commitment you've made to public education. As a community, as a state, as a nation, we're faced with an ominous threat. Our democracy is at risk, and there are many reasons for that, but there's only one solution. The League believes that all of our children, and I do mean all of them, must have an opportunity for quality education, and that's what you are all here about. You as advocates for public education may face the toughest and most important challenge of any leader in our community. Your work guides our children, and they are our future. You are all well aware of the complicated problems public education poses. But here in Charleston, we believe that you as a board are going to try to undertake important work that can not only affect our community, but it may also set a standard or create a path of performance for others who care about public education in South Carolina. As individuals, we know that you are important, but as a board, you have the power to come together as colleagues, to focus and work effectively and efficiently. And in doing that, you'll change the lives of so many children that will in turn change our world. The Charleston League and its 300 members wish you well in this journey. We ask that you be transparent in your work, and we hope that we will be able to support you, and that together we can be a positive force for all the children in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Zach the City.
So, I understand the board doesn't answer questions, so I assume your actions today and in the future will represent whether changes are being taken. Prior to the school board, to the election, all the school board candidates, with the exception of Ms. Green, who I fully commend for your stance, expressed a desire to provide teachers with a mandatory 20-minute break each day. The issue was brought up in a candidate debate, and while I see that fight as irrelevant and tenuous at best, the issue of teacher morale is not. As you may or may not know, there is a faction of teachers within the state and our district who are calling on others to use their SIP time, disrupt testing, or walk out. I share no affiliation with this group, but as a frontline educator, their message is clearly heard and frequently discussed. Whether or not these plans manifest, the growing discord among the rank and file has negative consequences, and these issues hamper our students' ability to obtain a top-notch education. So, tonight's question is simple. How is the board attempting to improve teacher morale inside the district? What, if any, specific actions are you working on to make our district a better place for teachers and by extension, children? The rising tension will crest, and hopefully, you will have acted responsibly and taken action before the hoi polloi drags us into a quagmire that none of us want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all of the public comments.
Now, this time we'll have Mr. Barory, who would give us our superintendent's report tonight.
So, Dr. Postaway sends her regrets, and I do take great pleasure in presenting some points to you all tonight for consideration. A little bit of background, back in November, you all approved the goals for the district, and so although a number of those 24 goals that staff has marched out smartly, it's very clear what has to be done. A number of the goals require a lot of additional work and development, and so we worked to develop proposed initiatives that will support these goals, and what you have in your board package are high-leverage initiatives, five of them, in which we plan to come back to you all next month with some details, some meat on these bones, of things that we would take on board. A number of the presentations made today and a number of your questions asked of those staff members hit that target spot on, on the money. We talked about the high school, middle school, and elementary school equity. Dr. Williams spent some time talking about the middle schools. That'll be the first one on the agenda for this group, looking across the entire district, not just those schools with 600 students. But that was a preview of the development of that, and we'll come to the board again in January with some specific initiatives that we would like to get your approval to pursue as an example. The second item on the list relates to the feeder patterns, and this falls in line with a comment that Mrs. Coats made earlier about that feeder pattern through IB, whether it be IB, creative arts, or other specialty programs like STEM, do we have a feeder pattern from pre-K or from K all the way up to through high school? So, that'll be one effort that we'll look at for a number of the constituent districts that don't have clear feeder patterns and where we're missing those effective programs to provide the desired results. We'll also look at staffing the low-performing schools, making sure we have strong leaders in those schools. We'll spend some time making sure that they have the tools necessary to further improve their school, schools and bring those up. Fourthly, from a discipline perspective, we did roll out the new discipline plan in the past. There have been a number of successes with that discipline plan for, for equity's sake, and we've also received a lot of feedback from teachers and from parents that we need to make further improvements in that discipline plan so that the kids that are in class and working well in class can continue to be educated, and we provide the additional support necessary for those kids that aren't necessarily ready for one of our traditional alternative schools, but something that we can give them to get them the skills necessary to be a part of those classes. And so, that's one area that we'll be spending some significant time on. And lastly, the, the fifth area that's listed there is looking around the state, around the nation, around the world for programs that are successful with children like ours. You've all seen the areas where we've done well in the district, but you've also seen areas around the district that we haven't done well, and we haven't been able to turn around, and so we need to look to the outside to see what's out there and see if we can bring that into this district to cover it. So, again, we'll take a look at these five proposed initiatives and come back to you all with some details for the, the board's consideration. I conclude the superintendent's report.
Okay. Is there any questions for Mr. Barory? Hearing none, we'll move to item...
I have a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Reverend Collins?
The visitor, I mean, teacher having a 20-minute break. Do the teachers get a break now or anything, Mr. Barory? Office Ambrose, ma'am?
Why don't we ask the teacher?
She is a head teacher, deputy.
It would, it would depend because when they get a planning period, they get planning time, and the students are going to elect into exploratory classes, so there could be some elementary teachers that don't get it every day.
So, it's based on the planning period?
Mm-hmm.
That would be the only break they get?
Yep.
What about lunchtime? No lunchtime?
I have to ask the level leaders about lunchtime. They vary from level to level.
All right, I'll give us an update at some point. We can get into that.
For the most part, elementary teachers eat lunch with their students, so that wouldn't be an, an in-comfort time for everyone.
What about, what about middle and high?
Same thing. It does vary from middle school to middle school, whether or not the teachers actually eat a comprehensive class. The majority of those schools, they do.
So, there's, there's no guarantee that they break time before teachers, right?
No, 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 no. For middle school teachers, yes, they get it during those comprehensive class times I was speaking to you about earlier.
That's not a break, because they're planning. I think it, I think it, that's good for tonight.
Okay, item 6A, Strategic Education Committee.
6A and B, we included on the consent agenda.
Yes.
And so, we just voted on those, but we did not include...
Did we?
In my motion, I did. I didn't, but I didn't include...
You pulled something out, I know you, I know you pulled something out.
I pulled out A, B.
Eight, B.
And in the motion included 6A and B.
Yeah, I remember seeing that. I thought potential...
So, 6A and 6B was included on...
No, B was out. She pulled B out.
No, 6A and 6B.
I pulled out...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
8B.
Right, hold one second. So, 8B was pulled, and we know that's to be correct. Item 6A is where we are right now.
Right, I should have voted on that.
So, was that included in...
In my motion, it was. Somebody...
I didn't understand that.
Okay. All right. Julie, did you capture that?
I did, both items. There were two items under consent, and then the other item under policy and personnel's move, but, so the next item for this meeting would be 7A.
7A, okay.
I have a question, sir.
Yes, Reverend Collins?
I think it'd be wise that if we don't move items during the meeting in place of any consent, but let them go where they fall naturally from the votes we had previously. I don't, I don't think it's right to come here and take a vote and then put some in potential consent after the board talk about it. Unless, unless had unanimous support, then that's, that's why it was designed that way. The item would go automatically with unanimous support.
I get it, but...
But I don't want people to start moving it around.
Well, I understand that, but anyone can make a motion, it can be second, and you can vote, vote it up or down, so I mean, you can, you can...
The only thing you can't do about a policy, what we have in place.
That's why we'll have a parliamentary messenger, person in place come January.
I'm okay for tonight, though.
Okay, thank you so kindly. Item 7A.
7A, I, I move that we, well, maybe somebody else ought to move that one. Well, I move that we approve this ad hoc transportation.
I'll second it. And we're just waiting. There we go.
I would prefer that we don't make...
Reverend Collins, did you vote?
I would prefer that our board agendas and our board actions, which are the only legally binding actions we take, not say same motion as Cal.
No, that's for mine, that's just for me because you made the change in the early... I can go back and get it and copy and paste it right now. You don't want to wait. It takes longer.
Okay.
We have time.
I was thinking that the reason we use board docs is so that the public can follow along.
Got it.
Okay, let me go back to the other meeting.
Can you make that correction, Julie, please?
Or just in the...
Thank you.
Two more, two board members and then to be concluded by June 2019.
Correct.
I'll change the wording when I get there tomorrow to the same.
Who are we waiting on?
I know we're voting on this, but after the six months, then it comes back to the board for another vote?
Or we never ever see anything about it again.
No.
Just...
That's not the purpose of the ad hoc committee.
Six months.
The ad hoc committee will make a recommendation back to the board.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm waiting on two.
Who are we waiting on?
Two people.
Ms. Coats and Mr. Miller.
Ms. Coats has already voted.
I just voted too.
Hasn't shown up yet.
Can you use a children?
I've got my little change vote icon, which is what you get when you vote.
Yeah.
Okay, just let's be patient. Are we still waiting, Julie?
Not popping up on my end. I can, Ms. Coats must have told me how she voted. Oh, I abstained. You abstained.
Okay, who else are we waiting on? Julie, who else are we waiting on? There we go, okay. Five yes, two no's, one abstention, one, Mr. Garrett's not... Okay, item 8A. Policy and Personnel.
Yeah, passed.
Yes, it did. Five yes, I'm sorry. Motion pass.
So the item 8A is policy JFABC, which is the student transfer policy. You should have it in your packet to be marked up. I, I brought this forward, I, based on the feedback that we've gotten from board members over the last, I guess, probably two or three years of the kind of things that we wanted to approve and, and I think our goal of having every school in the district being a school that we want all of our kids to be able to go to. And then plus, we've gotten some recommendations from constituent board members. Just a real quick recap, we, there's, we, on here, the recommendation is if we wanted to delete things like it being okay to transfer, if you want to do a career in technology program at another school. As you heard today, we're now, you know, moving forward and adding those throughout the district. Attend a program not offered at home school. Well, that, again, we talked about that today. We need to be offering programs across all schools. Hardship closer to where parent lives or better accommodate before or after school needs. We had lots of questions about whether that was, you know, whether we could document that. Child previously attended, planning to move and you want to start school. That, again, was one of those things which we didn't have documentation on. And then school previously attended. What added was family moves out of the attendance zone during the current school year because this year and last year, we dealt with some folks who moved, but they wanted their child to finish just that school year. And then, so we had to take action on those. Then also a lot over the last year or two, I think the constituent boards and our board has, have received requests to transfer based on the, the parent saying there's bullying. Well, if there is bullying, that should follow policy JICFAA. So we included that in here. So we're, the goal, and I know this is a lot. The goal is to revamp the policy and have it in place in February so that, as we talked about magnets, schools, partial magnets, all of those things. So it could impact the next school year. So if there are things we want to change, I would just ask that we have first reading on it tonight and then we can work between now and the January meeting to make any adjustments.
Okay. Just one second, Reverend Collins?
Okay. On the surface...
What?
On the surface...
Surface.
It's a lot of changes to make in a policy during a board meeting. It's basically creating a new policy, a new standard of transfers. We talk about health reasons and academic reasons, we're going off of health places. We've had these issues for years and, uh... I don't think we can do this particular policy justice in a board meeting. The board, yes or no, with a five-minute discussion. It really is, this really needs to go back to committee to hold. We can really vet through it and get our minds around it because it's going to create a lot of confusion. You start talking about hardship or one, one child at a school, another one at a school. Hardship, uh, health reasons or whatever the hardship is, I don't know. Academic reasons. I mean, I want to help the students and I want to help families get the kids in the same schools, but I don't want to rush this through with a first reading. But I, without the full board getting their mind around it and really working through it, discussing it in the committee, the whole meeting, or we can set aside a particular time to work on these policies by itself. I don't think we can do justice tonight, though.
Did you have a specific question? I mean, did you, did you review it?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of me, yeah.
Did you have a specific question?
I have concerns.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying there. When you, you look in the, you look under the green, it says under non-discrimination, non-discriminatory reasons for consideration, the transfers but are not limited to the following. See, but are not limited to. I have a problem with that. Attend, attend a school that offers academic programs, not offer at the home school. We have to make sure, we have to be careful with that. For documented health reasons. That could be anything. It could be somebody depressed. It could be somebody that has swollen toe. Don't want to be at the school or, or, because they have big ears or somebody, who cares? Hardships such as attend a school with one or more siblings. A family moves out of attendance during the curtain, now that's not, that one's not a problem. It's, it's a lot to make a sudden change in a, in a board meeting. It needs to be, it needs to be well-vetted. That, that's my concern. It needs to go through the committee to hold.
Could we, could we...
First reading, though.
Right, this is first reading.
Doesn't matter whether first or not, it's a lot.
Reverend Collins, I, I agree, it is a lot. We could have first reading now and our, part of that motion and first reading would be to bring it back to the January committee of the whole meeting and, and ask anybody who has specific changes to, you know, to have those ready for us so you and I could work on it between now and the January committee of the whole. But if we wait to do first reading, we have to do two, two readings on it. So if we do first reading in January, you know, second reading in February, we're, we're trying to get it done.
All right, so let me ask you one question and then I'll stop. With this policy, would, would you allow the children from Baptist Hill, from Northwestern High School, Evan Stowe, to transfer to Wando to get a course that's not offered at their home school? Because it gets transferred from their district, District Four or West Ashford or downtown. They, they can go to Wando.
If it's an academic, if it's an academic...
If they want a course that's off, if I say they want advanced Spanish or something, or take a German course or French, are you going to allow Northwestern students to try, leave their home school to go to Mount Pleasant to attend it?
Well, it's not to me, it's a vote of the law.
No, I'm saying, but if we approve this policy, are we going to be fair to all the students?
Create the policy if we follow the policy.
Yeah, we follow, yeah, we follow the policy.
So is there a second policy that would, to Reverend Collins' point?
No, that pretty much opens the door to saying, I want to go to...
That would address transportation and all of this stuff?
Yeah, but you all, we've had much more lenient policy before now. So I mean, all those, that's saying that, we're not, this is actually narrowing down the scope a little bit versus, but the policy that we have had where the, a lot of times, board members said, I don't want to approve somebody going from X school to...
Okay.
It's actually removed the enrollment piece. So it, it is, is written, if there is an academic program at a school, a student will be allowed to transfer to that school because the part here that says if a situation arises where a school has reached capacity, the district will use an enrollment lottery to create a waiting list has actually been removed.
I think, I mean, I wouldn't mind passing this as a first reading and then we can discuss it. But also, if we think of all the presentations that we received today, if all these new programs are put in, then I think we won't, hopefully, we won't see so many transfers. That's one point. The other point is we spend a lot of time in executive session talking about transfers.
Well, we've actually discussed this policy seven times in the last 14 months. I mean, we spend a lot of time on this.
So personally, I'd like to see the first reading pass and then we could look at it for another month and then tighten it up.
Okay, Ms. Coats?
So what is policy JICFAA as it relates to transfers?
It relates to bullying and how you report your bullying and, and how the staff follows up on it. So, it transfers, so...
So if you, if you ask for a transfer, we're going to tell them they can't transfer because they have to refer back to a reporting policy.
If they're being bullied, if they're being bullied, they, we need to follow originally, I mean, first, follow the harassment intimidation or bullying process, a policy, which they can do and then they can, you know, there's, and there's a whole policy. I'm not going to read the whole thing to you. It's JI...
Right, but my point is, you said we took out the bullying provision and referred them to JICFAA. Now we're not addressing bullying in tran, involuntary transfers.
We are addressing bullying. We didn't address bullying in, in the past policy. It wasn't in there. People would put in there that they wanted to transfer because of bullying in, in executive session. Board members would say, well, how do we know they're being bullied? Well, what are we doing about the bullying? What's, and, so what, what...
Our issue with that was that the staff never was able to answer it. It wasn't that we knew the parents weren't following the procedures.
Well, the, the procedure is for the parents to follow policy JICFAA. That policy's there.
Our issue wasn't that the parents weren't following the procedures.
Yes, but none of them had, most of the people that came to us had not gone through this process. They had applied to the constituent board and said their child was bullied and then they applied to us.
So was there an issue, Ms. Coats, with the referencing?
It's a non, it's a non-quantifiable reason for changing a policy. But who is the student transfer policy committee?
There isn't a student transfer policy committee.
So why does the action item say these items were decided by the student transfer policy committee?
Their, staff worked on it, I worked on it. We, I got input from two, from a couple of constituent board members, too, but...
So why does it say the revisions proposed were made by the student transfer policy committee? On the background discussion?
I don't, my, propose, oh, it just says committee was comprised of various district staff persons with student transfer options. So it was Tashiba and me and, and then, and...
Staff.
Trudy, and then they presented it to other staff. And I would have liked it to have been on the committee of the whole agenda today, but it was not, so...
I think I would have liked it if you'd included some board members in that committee.
Well, we could have talked about it in the committee of the whole meeting, so...
But I think, I think a much better process would have been if we bring forward a policy of transfers. If we're going to talk about this, it needs to be included with the employee transfers. It needs to be included with the magnet school issues we're talking about. It needs to be, we, we need to start talking about these things in totality instead of individually with separate stuff. I would ask that we...
The employee transfer policy is on the agenda for today, too.
Okay, Reverend Collins?
And not to belate the time, but Ms. Jeffries, you made this statement about passing first reading, but just let me reiterate that my biggest concern is this. Valid non-discriminatory reasons for consideration to transfer include, but are not limited to the following. The not limited to the following is an open door pass to get in for any reason you want to get in. I just, and I just want to...
That's what our current policy says. Our current policy says exactly that.
But, but then you list some certain things that, that I'm not sure I agree or disagree with.
And this current policy does, too. It lists more things.
I, I probably support the policy overall, but I don't want to do it here in this type of meeting. But not, not the transfer policy. It needs time and consideration and a lot of minds behind it. The whole board needs to be on, the whole board needs to be on board with it and understand the implications of it.
I would suggest then we could have, we could do first reading now saying that it would go back to the January committee of the whole and if a small group of board members, you, Cindy, me, whoever, want to work on it between now and the commi, January committee of the whole, we could do that.
I'd like to see it go to committee to hold, uh, the way it is. Go back, go to the committee to hold.
Okay.
Can, can I get a commitment from the board chair that he won't call a special meeting and ask us to vote on it immediately after the committee of the whole in January? Can we at least have time between the workshop, the, the committee of the whole in January before?
Sure, yes.
I'm asking the chairman.
Y'all need to stop.
Can you, can you tell, can you tell us that this won't be something we have to make second reading on in a special called meeting right after the committee of the whole meeting in January?
As long as the committee has ample time to vet out the concerns and, and have given this, this process or this committee valid time and discussion, I don't see a reason why this cannot be on the regular board meeting, which is the fourth, the second Monday in January.
The fourth Monday.
The fourth Monday, I'm sorry.
When will it go to committee then?
It will go at the committee to hold meeting.
So we'd have, we'd have it coming out of committee of the whole the second Monday and we'd have two weeks to consider everything before we'd have to make the final vote. But I would prefer it not have all those things about, I'd prefer your answer not say plenty of time because that's, that's not measurable.
Well, what's measurable is the fact that this transfer policy has, has already been given to you right now and the corrections has been outlined or the recommendations have been made as outlined. So you're, technically, you have until now and the next committee to hold meeting to really vet out any concerns or questions that you may have. And then thereafter, following that discussion, as I said a minute ago, as long as we have fully vetted it out and, and we agree to what the recommendation should be, there shouldn't be any reason why I can't go to the next regular board meeting. So I think ample time is there to do that.
Julie, do we, do I have a motion on the floor?
The motion is...
So is there any other questions about this, discussions going on down there?
I'm sorry, no.
Okay.
What, what is the motion?
What's the motion? Go ahead.
Motion to approve first reading of revised policy JFABC and bring back to committee at the whole meeting in January and then the regular board meeting in January.
Okay.
Did we get a second on that?
Second.
Priscilla seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I guess, I guess that'll be okay.
Thank you, Reverend Collins.
That's not the motion we're voting on. Oh, okay.
Yes, it is.
Does it come in, Julie?
Are y'all not getting it?
Uh-uh.
Not yet?
Yeah, not to vote yet.
Yep.
It's sent to the committee to hold already, I think.
And how do you vote?
Do you want to do it manually?
Well, if it's not, I'm just going to move forward unless it pops up. Mr. Holland, should I, how do you vote?
Nay.
Ms. Coats, how do you vote?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Going to committee to hold, I vote yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?[1694.07]
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes.
All right, so who else other than Reverend Collins and Cindy want to work on this between now and the committee of the whole meeting?
I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, we just got to really consider the impact it was going to do.
I got it, I got it.
Just email you and let you know if we're interested.
Item 8C, entertain a motion.
You said 8C or 8B?
8C.
Move to approve.
Second.
Probably moving second. Moved by Ms. Coats, second by Reverend Collins. Are there any questions? Julie, am I still manual?
I was going to say I'm...
Nope, there goes.
There it goes. There it goes. Please cash your vote. Has it populated for everyone? Okay. All right, that motion passes. Eight. Item 8D?
Move to approve, second.
It's probably moving to second. Are there any questions? Hearing nine. Motion moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coats. Please cash your votes. Motion passed, eight oh. Item 8E, voluntary transfers for children of CCSD employees. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
8E, right.
8E, I'll second that motion. Is there any questions?
This is voluntary transfer for children.
This is employees, right?
Yep.
Item 8E, voluntary transfers for children of CCA employees. It's been moved by Ms. Darby, second by Reverend Mack. Are there any questions?
Does this include the changes that we asked y'all to include after first reading? And can you point out where those are in here?
It should be showing up as marked, but it might...
Well, I've got the red, but the red was the first reading. I'm asking for the changes we asked more between.
The biggest change was instead of saying a specific contractor, it says, you know, that additionally, the requirement of the student owning property, blah, 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 is, oh, wait, not that one. Then bus drivers employed by the contracted service provider, school resource officers and other positions working in or affiliated with our schools are not considered employees. However, the district will consider requests to utilize this provision in the same manner as district employees on a case-by-case basis.
So, they will still have to apply for a transfer that will be voted on by the board. Remember, when it's an employee transfer, it's automatic. Is that what this, if it's a case-by-case basis that has to be considered, we're the considering body?
Right.
So, this is now telling SROs and bus drivers that they no longer will get that transfer, they can request it.
Actually, yeah, it goes to the constituent board before it ever comes to us.
Well, right. And then, so, but before, it was an automatic approval. This takes that away and it is now going to be voted on with the other transfers by the board.
But bus drivers and SROs weren't an automatic approval. They weren't, they were an exception, so...
I think if we would go back, that that was one of the things that was in the first.
So, this covers all employees now? This cover all employees with children?
Oh, CCSD, yes.
All employees.
Yes.
It's always covered the employees. The question has been, what does it do for vendor employees? And do they have to be vendor employees in order for the transfer to continue to be valid?
But they're vendors, they're not employees.
Right, but we had people who applied for transfers who parents were bus drivers or SROs.
Right.
And so...
You included them in this policy, I'm asking you.
Well, actually, they're included in this policy, but it's going to be voluntary.
They wouldn't let me go back in it because I got the vote thing and I can't get back inside of it.
They're included in this policy as saying, yes, they can apply for a transfer and it will be dealt with on a case-by-case basis. So, that'll go to the constituent board.
Second reading.
I am kind of curious as to why that wouldn't be under the voluntary transfer process since it's under an employee transfer process, pulling them out and telling them they're not going to follow the employee transfer process.
Ask that question again, Ms. Coats?
Why isn't it under the voluntary transfer policy?
I think, because it, probably because when we started talking about it, when she brought this forward, really, it was for the residency requirement. Then we started talking about the bus drivers and SROs and I think that's why Natalie included it in here.
I would...
The bus drivers and SROs are not employees.
Correct.
So, what, is there a reason we would address them at all?
Well, the board moved towards creating a policy that would allow SROs, we always allow bus drivers to put their children in the school they request. And then the district came and said, we would like you to consider doing the same thing for SROs.
But the thing is, the constituent boards weren't always allowing bus drivers' kids. That wasn't automatically happening.
Right, but they would always come to us and get approved. Remember, we have final say.
Any further questions on item 8E?
But this is second reading, guys, so there isn't any changing after this. This keeps bus drivers on a case-by-case. This takes SROs out of the employee thing. It's now putting them back into our appeals process.
Mr. Holland?
What did you do with 8B?
8B, I pulled to come back in January, committee of the whole.
We pulled it.
Okay. Is that okay?
All right, has everyone cast? Who we're missing?
I'm missing Collins, Coats.
I'm coming, I'm sorry.
Reverend Collins, can you vote, please? Just, Ms... Okay. All right, that motion passed, five yes, three no's. All right, item 8F. Second reading on distant education.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we're moving properly. Second moved by Ms. Coats, second by Ms. Jeffries. Mr. Roy?
Right, so there's a code discrepancy between the document policy and what's on the agenda.
Okay.
So, the correct, if you're looking at your agenda, it says IJNDDA. It should be IJNDDAA. That's the actual policy.
IJND.
So, double A at the end, not DA.
Double A?
Double A at the end.
Please, Ms. Jones? You have your hand? Who has it?
Can we?
Okay, all right, got it. So, the correct, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And the title as well. On the agenda, it says distance education. The policy says distance, online and virtual education.
That was part of the changes that we made.
Correct.
Can we pull it and get that cleaned up so that our records are correct?
I think we can have second reading and we can make sure that for, in the minutes and everything, that that's pointed out and we have it correct.
That's correct.
Is there an issue with this policy?
Is this time sensitive?
No, this is a, it's a, it's a second reading. We had first reading on 11/26/18. And I think if we make sure that in the policy and in the minutes, we say distance, online and virtual education and that it's code IJNDDAA, we should be good.
What I'm asking is, what was the issue before? What the change about? I mean, why is the change coming? Okay, Ms. Ambrose?
It's on there.
The policy was first written years ago. It's only distance education. Now, we have online and...
Okay, technology. Okay, thank you, Ms. Ambrose.
Okay.
You have questions?
No, I thought that was a good question.
All right. So, Julie, can you correct that? I'm sorry?
Is it not showing up? I've got motion to approve second reading of policy IJNDDAA, distance, online and virtual education.
Okay, I don't see that.[1653.92]